We are back in open session. Chancellor Burke will provide a welcome greeting now.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our remote board meeting of the South Orange County Community College District. I'm pleased to inform you that this will be our last virtual meeting. The board meeting in April will be held in person back in the boardroom. We welcome trustees Marcia Milchiker, Tim Jamal, Teri Witt-Rydel, Barbara J., Carolyn Inman, T.J. Prendergast, James Wright, and student trustee Satar Mateen. We welcome members of our district community who are participating virtually and members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via Zoom webinar. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted. Following the meeting, the district will make the recording available on the SOCCTD website. The audio of this meeting is being closed captioned in real time. The board is open to receiving public comments pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-15-21 and in compliance with AB 361. The published agenda stated that members of the public requesting to provide comments will be given the opportunity to make public comments directly via remote access and in real time during the meeting. Members of the public wishing to make a comment will be instructed to use the "raise hand" feature, unmute their audio, and must comply with a two-minute time limit. I would now like to turn the meeting over to trustee Milchiker, who will call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Chancellor Burke. The March 28, 2022, meeting of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, Assembly Bill 361, and Governor Newsom's executive order N 122. Our March board meeting is being broadcast in a hybrid format this month, with some trustees ending in person and some joining us remotely. We welcome students, faculty, district staff, and members of the public who are attending the meeting virtually via Zoom webinar. Are there any reportable actions that were taken in closed session?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, public report of action taken during closed session on a seven-to-zero vote. The board took action in a closed session to release a senior administrative assistant. Public action taken, seven-to-zero. With the board took action in a closed session to deny a campus security officer's appeal for administrative determination of unlawful discrimination. Public action taken from a zero-to-seven-to-zero vote. The board took action in a closed session to deny a campus security officer appeal of administrative determination on unlawful discrimination. That's all.
Okay, thank you, trustee Witt-Rydel. Right now, we will have an invocation by trustee Jay, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee Jamal.
Our heavenly Father, we come to you in gratitude for our many blessings. We are grateful for our wonderful administrators, faculty, classified staff, and police officers who have given so much of themselves and have worked together to help our students and institution get through the pandemic. We are grateful for our beautiful facilities, campus grounds. We are most grateful for our students. We also thank you so much for the community's support in our efforts to provide a quality education and workforce development. Heavenly Father, be with the board tonight to help us make proper, wise, and righteous decisions for the direction of the district and students. We ask that you be with all nations so we can come together and work for freedom, fairness, justice for all. Please place a special blessing, a blessing on the people of the Ukraine who have gone through such a disastrous fighting for their freedom and for the loss of their loved ones. Amen.
Thank you.
Please join me in reciting the pledge to our great nation.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Members of the public, members of the public wishing to comment on an agenda item or on other members of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board will be given an opportunity to make public comments directly via remote access and in real time during the meeting. Members of the public wishing to make a comment will be required to use the "raise hand" feature, will be unmuted and asked to speak. A two-minute time limit for each speaker will be observed. Be advised that the maximum time allotment for public speakers on any one topic, regardless of the number of speakers, shall be 20 minutes. Are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay, so there are no public comments, and then we're going to the agenda item and proceed as usual. Right now, we have board reports. So right now, we will start at... T.J., would you like to give your board report first, if you have one?
No report.
And trustee Witt-Rydel, do you have a board report?
Can you just pass it by? I dropped my phone.
Okay, okay. Trustee, Tim Jamal?
Yes, thank you. So last month, many of you appropriately spoke about the injustices taking place in Ukraine. I believe the chancellor wore garb attire that reflected the flag. I saw today Dr. Stern on our closed session call had the flag of Ukraine on his lapel. And I think we do that because we feel a sense of injustice, and it is an injustice that's taking place in Ukraine, because we feel it in our hearts, because we know what freedom means to us. And that leads me to why I'm so disappointed in one of our current local elected officials. The mayor of Irvine, Farah Khan, has recently mocked the genocide of the Armenians. She did so in meetings with representatives of the government of Turkey, including a local prolific denier of the genocide. And that really pierced at my heart and the hearts of many, not only Armenians, but the community of Irvine. Irvine is a fantastic community. It's a tolerant community. We have Irvine Valley College, of course, in the heart of Irvine. I remember four years ago when swastikas were painted on a synagogue in Irvine and also on the campus of Irvine Valley College. And I stood on the steps of Irvine City Hall with a bipartisan group of elected officials condemning hate, condemning anti-Semitism, and condemning, really, kind of speech that's, although protected, because we are a great country, we allow the speech to happen, but there's no place for it. And I turned to trustee Milchiker and I say, what if a local mayor, Farah Khan, what if she denied the Holocaust and ridiculed the massacres of 6 million Jews? Imagine how you would feel.
It would destroy my heart.
And I saw last week, T.J., your impassioned plea for Ukraine, and I feel it as well. But I have to say, I am profoundly disappointed. I would hope that this Community College District would stand on its principles, the principles of human rights, the principles of justice, the principles of self-determination. And let me say one thing about self-determination. The UN Declaration of Human Rights talks about two, well, a lot of protections, but there's territorial integrity, that's what's happening in Ukraine. But there are people in the world who are not recognized by the United Nations, who are subject to racism, injustices, discriminatory practices, repression of human rights. And in this case, there are many people, but of course, I am concerned in this case about the Armenians who live in Nagorno-Karabakh, who've been subjected to gross violations of human rights by the governments of Azerbaijan and Turkey. And when the mayor of Irvine associates herself with these representatives and does so repeatedly, it's not an isolated incident that happened. She hid the video, and it was surfaced last week. She initially came out and denied it. She mocked it and said it was her political opponents who planted the video, which was nonsense, of her mocking the deaths of 1.5 million-plus Armenians. She's tried to, you know, offer some kind of an apology, and we'll see where this goes. But I would hope that this district, which represents Irvine and Irvine Valley College, would say, just because she's the mayor of a city and we have a relationship with that city, does that mean we should not stand on principles? I mean, I've heard some comments, well, we better be careful, she's the mayor of Irvine, and we have a relationship, and they provide some grant money. If the mayor of Irvine is going to deny us grant money so that she can mock and deny a genocide, let her try to do that. So I asked my colleagues, I see your passion for Ukraine, and I have it as well. I met in 1996 with President Clinton. I led a coalition of East Central Europe European groups, and we met with him in the Roosevelt Room. And we demanded, urged him to admit into NATO Poland, Hungary, the Czech Republic, the Baltic States, and the remaining states of the former Soviet Union. So I was on the front lines of that. And I know what it means to demand and request the freedoms that we enjoy so much. So I know I've gone over, but I asked the district, the leadership, the board members to say that, you know, to stand on principle. And what we're doing in Ukraine, we are standing on principle, but there are people who don't have a nation-state and who aren't protected under the guise of territorial integrity. There's something called self-determination, and I'll close with this. Imagine if the World Order in 1776 and 1789 said, we don't support self-determination. What would that mean? Would we be sitting here? Would we be in a room like this where I can go over my time for two or three, four minutes? Would we be able to do that? What if self-determination was not allowed? And the world congregated together and made us live under the British monarchy that we didn't want to live under? Would we be here? I don't know. So, thank you.
Yeah, we feel how much this means to you, we really do. Trustee Jay?
Thank you, Tim. That was wonderful.
Yeah, it was excellent.
Okay. On Thursday, May 5, that's Cinco de Mayo, I am looking forward to attending the Irvine Valley College Foundation Awards Dinner, celebrating excellence. The IVC Foundation is planning an event that promises to be engaging, entertaining, and most importantly, will raise needed funds to support the students and the programs at IVC. As always, there are sponsorship opportunities available that start at $500. Additionally, you could, you would like to put a commemorative ad or support message in the program booklet, that can be done for as little as $125. While this event is always celebrated, this year is going to be extra special. It is their first event in three years. I invite you to join me in celebrating all that is excellent about IVC being a sponsor and placing a message in the booklet or attending. It is so wonderful to see Saddleback Art Gallery open. There is an art exhibit that I attended called "Please Wait." It features artwork of the recent masters, master of fine arts graduates from Cal State University Fullerton, Cal State University Long Beach, and San Diego State University. The exhibit features and highlights the work from the exhibition of the 2020 and 2021 that was denied public showing due to the lockdown of the pandemic. The exhibition will be on display till March 31. That's just a couple of days. I want to thank Barbara Holmes, director, for her hard work and effort into curating the "Please Wait" exhibit and bringing it into our community. I am so pleased to hear that the South Orange County Community College District Veterans Center Community Project Request for IVC and Saddleback was included in the FY22 Omnomenus Bill. It was 610,000 to be split between both colleges to support the veterans' centers. A big thanks to Capital Abcancy Partners and the college staff that wrote the proposal on behalf of our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Inman, do you have a report?
Yes, very briefly. I wanted to thank Senator Dave Mann again. His two bills that deal with community college have passed through the Senate Education Committee. They have other things to do, of course, but the one, SB 1080, strengthens educational opportunities for students because it allows us to come to, go to, whatever, the camp, student, you know, the job fairs, all the things where you get to recruit students. And as I said last month, I was appalled to find out that there was ever any question about that. And then the other one, 1299, has to do with workforce shortages and technology, industry, all of those things that are so, so important, and especially, it seems like now more than ever. I want to thank President Milchiker for providing some wonderful books that she brought home from a conference for us, more to read and learn. Thank you very much. And to wish her good luck on the election to the CCCT board. And lastly, I want to ditto what trustee Jamal has said. I'm the person up here that lives in Irvine, and there's a lot of us that aren't happy with what's going on. I remember what I was, I was reminded that once, when I was a very young child, probably the same as my grandchildren now, someone was talking about prejudice and bias, and I remember saying very clearly, thinking very clearly, the only people I'm biased against are people that are biased. And that's just the way I've been since I was forever here. And to mock and deny the Armenian genocide and to make fun, it's really disgraceful. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. And trustee Witt-Rydel, did you want to have?
Yes, quickly. I am the representative for our foundation, Saddleback College Foundation. Would like to let you know that we are very busy reviewing scholarship applications. We have over 150 reviewers. We are looking forward to celebrating our scholarship donors and their student recipients at our scholarship ceremony on Friday, May 20, Friday, May 20, Friday, May 20, at 3:30 PM. We will be outside this year at the Science Building on the Saddleback College campus. We are also grateful to ASG Scholarship Match, wow, they're a great group, which has helped us raise nearly a half a million dollars in annual scholarship support. That is wonderful, and thank you to ASG. I quickly just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Hernandez and Dr. Stern. In reading their reports, I am so proud of the colleges. The accolades that were shared from IVC and the activities and accolades from Saddleback were awesome. And I thank them for putting pictures and prose with it. I also, I don't know why, but I'm so in tune with the speech team, and let me tell you, we can be triumphant because I see more first places than second or third in the report that was given. So congratulate to our students and to our faculty to make all this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And is, does trustee, we don't have a Zoom TV screen over here, so we don't really see what's going on in Zoom. Does trustee Wright would like to give a report now? Because I don't see him.
I'm here.
Oh, would you like to give a report? I can't see you, so I'm sorry.
Sure, sure. On Monday, March 7, 2002, my wife and I...
Oh, we just changed the screen? Okay, I didn't know that.
We met to celebrate Dr. Chris McDonald for his...
Thank you.
Chris McDonald.
Chris McDonald.
For good work and service at Irvine Valley College. Before he leaves to his new role as Vice Chancellor of Education and Technical Services for the district. A quad in the, in the fountain of Liberty Arts Building was a, it was a, it was a wonderful time from 1:30 to 2:30 in the afternoon. And also on Saturday, March 19, 2022, my wife and I went to Irvine Valley College in front of the BSTIC building to go to the Orange County Unit of Free Tax Preparation. Assembly member Coty Petry Norris was there. A few students were already there for the OC Free Tax Preparation to help students. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Wright. I'd give my report now, and first, I do appreciate my other board members' reports, they're speaking from their hearts. I have to thank trustee Inman for nominating me to be a candidate for the CCCT board and then board for unanimously supporting that. And to demonstrate my thanks, I campaigned hard in Sacramento, wrote and turned in my qualifications on time, wrote and sent out another flyers to all the trustees in the state, prepared and practiced my seven-minute speech for their online candidate forum. And if anybody wants to see it, it's now on the California Community Colleges Women's Caucus website. So I hope everyone watches it, as I told the best jokes, actually, the only jokes. And I'll find out if I won at the Academy Award Ceremony at the trustee conference in Dana Point in June. I sat next to Israel Dominguez, the Saddleback College Director of Economic and Workforce Development, at a South Orange County Community College Economic Coalition meeting, and asked him for a briefing, because there's such a great demand for employees now. Disneyland is giving a $2,000 finder's fee, and our students need to get great jobs. So he put together a short, excellent presentation with Dean John Jeremiah and Assistant Dean Carrie Irwin, and I sent the Word doc that accompanied it to all the board members. I also chose the Marion Bergerson Award winners this year. And the academic senate president, Professor Margot Lovett, gave a great speech for the International Women's Day for AAUW called "The Woman's War of 1929: Anti-Colonial Resistance by Women in Eastern Nigeria, West Africa." It was so interesting and so well-received that we won it back. And I also agreed that I loved reading our two presidents' reports about the fabulous accomplishments at both of our colleges. For instance, IVC professor Kazumi Horikawa, heartfelt advice to her virtual math class, was featured in "Good Morning America." Her IVC student Alexis Markonovich posted Professor Horikawa's advice on TikTok. This video has gained close to $5 million views, and the link you can find on President Hernandez's board president report. And just, I'll tell you about one upcoming event. You can now preview the plants for sale online at the Saddleback College Virtual Plant Sale. The sale will go online Thursday, March 31 through Sunday, March 3. The plants are healthy and beautiful, and 100% of the proceeds for these plants go to student scholarships in our Horticulture Department. And my garden is blooming with all these beautiful plants. I just love them. So please find other outstanding upcoming events at both college presidents' reports. I don't have time to tell you about all of them, but they're great. Okay, so the next report will be Satar Mateen, our student trustee. Are you here?
She's not.
Oh, she's not? Okay. And the next one will be the Associated Student Government Report, Sam Lockhart from Saddleback College and DeAngelo Hunter from IVC.
Sam Lockhart isn't here?
Okay. Is DeAngelo Hunter here?
Yes.
Great.
Yes, hey, good evening, everybody. Just real quick, our report is probably a little shorter, but I'll try and speed through some of the things that have been happening. We are, we passed and supported, sponsored, let's say sponsored, our resolutions, and they'll be going to the SSC on the first to be defended. They include pronoun inclusivity online, especially lowering GI Bill requirements, plus like a couple other ones. I was just trying to use my time effectively. We're just getting back from ASAC, and elections are going on for our student government. Voting is going on, so it's a kind of a wild time, and we'll be seeing our next class of ASIBC. And just to go back to ASAC, because I wanted to preserve as much time as possible for this item, we went to Washington DC with the intent of doing professional development. ASAC is the American, should I get the, American Student Association of Community Colleges, and it's one of the bigger community college events in the country, and it happens in DC. Through that event, we were able to prioritize legislation that would be lobbied on behalf of the organization. Number one came up was DACA, and the second was free college, essentially. So through our relationship here, I believe the board, I can't, the CAP group, I'm trying to remember, it's Capital Abcancy Partners, we were able to meet with congressional representatives from the offices of Alex Bedea, Diane Feinstein, Mike Levin, and Katie Porter. And we were able to bring forth not only the resolutions we prepared to advocate for basic needs, free community college, and also on behalf of the disability rights. We got to form a coalition with not only Saddleback College, but also LA Community College. And through our organization, we were able to bring forth the most compelling stories, have a great presentation. And as president of the organization at ASIBC, I can only be so proud and see the whole year come full circle. So in part, I just want to say thank you to the board for making it possible, thank you for everything related to that trip. And I know so many of us are reinvigorated, and next year will be an even stronger, well-developed class of ASIBC leadership coming through. And thank you to Saddleback College for your partnership and everything, so.
Yeah, these trips are so wonderful for our students. It's really great. So thank you for letting us know about that. By the way, I just, I'm thinking about, you said that the president of, that the mayor of Irvine denied the Armenian Holocaust or the Iranian genocide. I just, that's terrible, as you said. So, and I'm also wearing the colors of the flag of Ukraine, yellow and blue, so, okay. So next, we have Irvine Valley College Academic Senate, Daniel DeRouay.
Hi, good evening, trustees. Just a shout-out, first of all, to my Associated Student Government President at IVC, DeAngelo Hunter. I think by his report, you get a sense of what a terrific job he has done this year and continues to do. So first, in terms of Senate. As we plan for the years ahead, even with COVID hopefully behind us, IVC may be facing a new normal in terms of our instruction of somewhere near 40% of our courses being offered online compared to 18% before COVID. This number meets the current estimates for student expectations for at-home and work-schedule-friendly options, and we need to compete effectively in the online area by thinking strategically, building on our strengths, and investing in our online pedagogy and in our technology resources. So the Senate will be working with our administrative officers, our deans, our staff colleagues, ASIBC officers, and our institutional researchers to confirm... to confirm the needs of our students and the best course of action for balancing our online and in-person schedules. Second, our Senate continues to work with our colleagues at Saddleback College and at District Human Resources in exploring the best way forward to improve and refine our training in combating implicit bias in our hiring practices and in our classrooms. And third, upon the approval of the board at your April 25 meeting, Dr. Laura Randon of the University of Texas, San Antonio, San Antonio, and where she's a professor, will be speaking at the IVC campus. And we wanted to give you a heads up to have a chance, trustees, to put this on your calendar. Her current research focuses on access, retention, and graduation of low-income and first-generation college students and of the transformation of teaching and learning to emphasize wholeness and social justice. We need more voices like that. She will be giving a lecture at IVC on April 29th from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM in BISTIC 101, and her lecture will be titled "Strong Opportunities: Real Successes, Addressing Equity for Community College Students." Thank you.
Thank you. Lot of good information. Thank you. And next, Saddleback College Academic Senate, Margot Lovett, our speaker.
Thank you, President Milchiker. Tonight, I'd like to talk about two things that represent the best of Saddleback and that deserve our acknowledgement and celebration. Saddleback students representing a variety of majors consistently are accepted to present their work at various undergraduate research conferences. Among the standouts are our STEM students who annually, and I'm not exaggerating here, take home honors at the UCI Honors Transfer Council of California Conference. They are mentored by, by our faculty throughout the entire research, writing, and presentation process. Although I know he'll say that his students deserve all the credit for this accomplishment, I want to single out biology professor Dr. Tony Huntley as one of a group of remarkable mentors of prize-winning students. Next, for the third year in a row, Saddleback College's robotics team was accepted into the University Mars Rover Challenge. They are the only community college team to earn this honor, the only one. And this is an international competition. And they ably compete against teams from top-tier universities such as UC Berkeley, MIT, Stanford, Cornell, Harvard, and Yale. I think it is hard to overestimate just how monumental an accomplishment this is. It tells us a lot about the talent and hard work of our STEM students and the dedication of their professors, for none of these achievements would be possible without the expertise and commitment to their students that typify our faculty. I am exceptionally proud to call them my colleagues. If you Google "Saddleback College Robotics, U R C S A R 2022", you'll find a five-minute YouTube video made by our robotics team about the process of creating the rover. I encourage you to do so. It is well worth viewing. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I promise you, I Googled the Saddleback College rover team and watched the movie today on YouTube, and it was, it was fabulous. So I, I really think our faculty are just, they just work very hard without any, like, worldwide recognition, yet their students get the worldwide recognition. It's fabulous. Okay, thank you so much.
That's how it should be, President Milchiker. That's how it should be.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, our Faculty Association, Louis Long.
Thank you, President Milchiker. I have no report tonight, other than to acknowledge that on the academic employee's agenda this evening are several faculty retirements, and I'd like to especially acknowledge the contributions of Kim Branch Stewart, Robert Farnsworth, and Pam Turner, who have all been members of the Faculty Association or contributed to the Faculty Association in some way, and we appreciate their contributions as we appreciate the contributions of all the faculty members who are retired tonight, whose retirement is being acted upon.
Absolutely. We'll miss them, but we're happy you're staying.
A little longer.
Yeah, thank you. Stay as long as you can. Okay, then the Irvine Valley College Classified Senate, Desiree Ortiz.
She's not present.
Okay, and the, not the Saddleback College Classified Senate, okay. Then the California School of Police, Police Officer Scott Ferguson Green, okay. Police officers, that, Arbert Knott, Bo Arbert Knott, no. And are there any board requests for reports? Okay, so now we, we move on to our resolutions, and there's a number of resolutions, which our clerk of the board, trustee Whit Ridell, will, will read today. Number important resolutions. So trustee Whit Ridell, can you read them?
Sure.
And then I think we can approve them all at once, can't we? Okay. No, we can't?
No.
Okay. We'll do it one at a time now.
One at a time. Resolution in support of equal pay in South Orange County Community College District and California Community College. Be it resolved that South Orange County Community College District will join First Partner Jennifer Sybil Newsom's Equal Pay California Pledge and advance the implementation of the California Fair Pay Act by conducting an annual district gender pay analysis, reviewing hiring and promotion processes to reduce bias and barriers, sharing information about the California Fair Pay Act with employees, identifying and promoting best practices that will help close the pay gap, including clear processes against retaliation. Be it further resolved that in the month of March, the South Orange County Community College District also recognizes International Women's Day and Women's History Month. Please call for a motion, and second, a real call vote will be taken.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so trustee Jamal made the motion, trustee Prandergast second. Madam Secretary, can you read the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Whit Ridell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
And student trustee Mateen is absent.
Okay.
The second resolution in recognition, recognition of April as the Community College Awareness Month. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District hereby proclaim April as the Community College Awareness Month and request that all students, faculty, and staff celebrate by promoting the good works of the college and the district. Please call for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so trustee Jay made the motion, and trustee Wright seconded it. And Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Whit Ridell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
And student trustee Mateen, absent.
The third resolution, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Month in South Orange County Community College District. Be it resolved that Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Month, otherwise known as Celebrate Diversity Month, is recognized in the month of April in the South Orange County Community College District. Be it further resolved that O C S O C C D commits to support, participate, and help expand inclusive conversations in support of an inclusive community in April and throughout the year. Call for a motion?
So moved.
Okay, trustee, did you say it? Trustee Inman, did you say it?
No, Wright did.
Oh, trustee Wright made the motion. Is there a second?
I, I made the motion, and Jim Wright.
Okay, trustee Jay made the motion, and trustee Wright seconded it. And now, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Ridell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen is absent.
Our fourth resolution. It's a resolution in recognition of April 27th, 2022 as Denim Day, part of Sexual Awareness Month. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of South Orange County Community College District does hereby designate April 27th as Denim Day during the month of April, which is also signified by Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Call for a motion.
I so move.
I second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Ridell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen, absent.
The last one?
Our last resolution in recognition of March as National Development Disabilities Month and request that all students, faculty, and staff help spread awareness. Now and therefore, be it resolved that South Orange County Community College District recognizes the many accomplishments and contributions of people with a developmentally disabled and proclaims the March 2022 as National Development Disabled Disabilities Awareness Month. And be it further resolved that South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees encourage all citizens to support individuals with developmental disabilities and their families in all aspects of living and thriving in the surrounding areas. Please call for a motion.
So moved.
I second.
Please, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Ridell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen, absent.
Okay. Okay, so they all, all the resolutions passed unanimously, as they should have, but they did. And our next agenda item is 7.1, which is the Board of Directors election. So I think, does the secretary, Madam Secretary, do you call the roll and ask the people who they're voting for? Because, or do I do that? I could do that. Okay. Okay, so I'm running, so, so I'm going to nominate myself, vote for myself, because I don't want to be a loser and lose by one vote. And Ken Brown, who's, he's the trustee of El Camino College, the president of the CCCT Board, and did an excellent job in Sacramento running the meetings. Tammy Silver, who's a Pasadena City College Board President. And I have one more I'm thinking of, but I'll, I'll just leave that for now, and I might vote the last, the last one in, in a few minutes. I'll, I'll let the other people vote. So TJ, do you have any people you'd like to vote for?
I would just nominate Mary Strobridge.
Yeah, that's.
That, that's the one I had. That's the one I had as number four.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I met all these people in Sacramento, and they were all, you know, exceptional, all four people. So you could put, you could put me down, Mary Strobridge, too, okay?
Right.
Yeah.
So you have.
You're gonna develop a slate, and then all of the board will vote on the slate.
Do you have room for two more, or you just stick with four?
Four.
Four's okay with me.
Two more.
I'm, I'm, I think it was Chancellor Burke who said that they don't like it when districts nominate less than six.
That's what she said, but I don't know.
Is that the case? Do they desire, is it preferred to have?
Completely up to you.
Oh, I thought I recalled you saying that. All right. I think it looks bad if you only nominate one.
I suggested if you only voted for the one person from this district, and you were voting early in the cycle, that would not look good.
I think it also depends on what trustee, okay, so, well, I'll let the board members decide what they want to do, okay? It's completely up to them.
I, I don't have any additional recommendations. I don't know, except for the ones already nominated. I really don't know the other trustees enough to submit names.
TJ, he said he had two more.
No, I just said you have room for two more, but you don't have to. You can do just the four.
Thank you.
I don't have two more names.
Okay.
But if somebody did, then you, you have room for two more. And if nobody has anybody else, so what do we have? We have Kenneth Brown.
Ken Brown, Marsha Milchiker, Ken Brown, Tammy Silver, and Mary Strobridge.
Yes.
Oh, then I would add Mary Ann Lutz. Of Citrus.
Okay.
That's five.
Okay.
Those are the only ones I know.
Okay. Do you have any, trustee Jay, do you have any?
No, those are all the five that I had.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Move that we move forward with the five nominees that we've listed.
Trustee Wright, is it okay if we move forward with the five that we listed already?
Was that for me?
Trustee.
What?
Was that for me?
Yes, for you, but there are five people nominated. Does that sound okay to you?
Well, I, I have six.
We'll see if one of his six are, are not on our five.
Oh, okay, okay. So do you want to name your six?
Yes, the, the six I've, I, is Kenneth Brown, El Camino, Jose.
Alcala.
Oh.
From Riverside.
I would do that.
Tammy, or Tamara. Uh, Silver from Pasadena, and then Marsha Milchiker.
Yeah, okay.
Lisa Petry in San Mateo, and then Milton Richards at Yosemite.
So there's three he has that are not on our list. Yeah, I would add, I would be okay with Jose Alcala.
You would?
Yeah. I've met him a few times.
You really should watch the video. That's really telling.
But yeah, if you throw in Lisa and Milton, that throws us over.
Right, so with Ken, Ken Brown, Mary Ann Lutz, Jose Alcala, Mary Strobridge, Tamara Silver, and Marsha Milchiker, you've got six.
Did you say, you, you said Ken Brown and Tammy Silver, too?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And Mary Strobridge.
I would move those six. Second.
Okay. So you want to name them again?
It's one, two, three, four, five, and seven.
And seven. Right, okay. Okay.
Okay, so is, is there a motion and a second for those six?
Yes, Mary did it.
Okay, Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Ridell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
And student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the next, the next, so thank you for nominating me. Appreciate it. The, the next item is the Board Policy Revision for Approval, BP 7400. The, it's just a very simple board policy, it's just simple employee travel. Is there a motion and a second?
Aye.
Trustee Jay makes the motion?
I make a motion.
And trustee Inman seconds it. Just like wording, it's nothing important. Can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Ridell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is our consent calendar. So are there any items that board members would like to pull off of the consent calendar? I, I'm gonna pull some items off for just some simple things. 9.4, 9.6, 9.15, and 9.16. So can we have a motion and a second for, for this?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Second, okay, there's a motion, trustee Jay and trustee Inman second. Can you please call the, the roll for this?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Ridell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, I know this is dangerous, but I just wanted to pull 9.4 off the agenda because we're giving, IVC is giving 310 Chromebooks and HP computers to their students with the Earn to Learn program with the Hearst funds. And I, and these students will have these laptops forever to help them in their, in their studies, and I think this is fabulous. With that, I'll make a motion. Is there a motion to, to pass it?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion. Trustee Inman makes a second. Can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Ridell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, and then the next one is 9.6, parking fees for summer 2022. We're not going to be charging parking fees to anyone, the students or the employees. So I just think this is wonderful, and everyone should know that. We should applaud that. So with that, I make, I make, is there a motion to pass it?
So moved.
So moved.
Trustee, trustee Jay makes the motion, trustee Inman seconds it, and can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And, and the other two are just, these items have never been on the agenda item before. I'm happy that some items are on the, I mean, on the consent calendar, excuse me. Anyway, I just thought I would ask Cindy if there's any changes for item, you know, this item, personnel item for academic employee, are there any, any changes at all? Vice Chancellor Viscachill? I guess there probably aren't.
I last spoke to her, she had no changes.
She had no changes.
There are no changes, thank you.
And I, I imagine that if there were changes, you'd pull it off the consent calendar, right? Or you'd move them off, right?
I would let the chancellor know that we would need to pull an item, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And there's just a few people, I do, as, as with Professor Louis Long mentioning it, there's a number of our very longtime professors that are retiring, and I'll just mention their names really quickly. Arthur Ambrose, chemistry instructor, retiring after almost 10 years. Janet Bagwell, a reading instructor, after 20 years. Kim Branch Stewart, well-loved human services instructor, after 10 years. Barbara Cox, Barbara Cox, a wonderful business instructor, after 14 years. Robert Farnsworth, a wonderful horticulture and landscape instructor, after 14 years. Sharon Haas, physical and education instructor, after 24 years. Alex Laurent, an accounting and business law management instructor, after 40 years. And Pam Turner, the emeritus out instructor, after 22 years. So we're losing a lot of great brains and great instructors, but the best instructors are staying, so I just want to thank you for staying. So is there a motion and a second for this item?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes a motion, and.
Second.
And trustee Inman seconds it, can you please call the roll?
Are we on, sorry, we on 9.15 or 9.16? What are we?
We're on academic employees, it's 9.15, 9.15.
Okay, it says we've already voted, am I reading this incorrectly? Okay, I just had a question.
Okay.
When was this moved to the consent calendar?
Just this month.
This meeting, just this month.
Why is that?
Because, you know, we checked with, with legal counsel, and these, these positions are really ratifies, so you ratify them because you delegate authority to me to make the appointments in the board policies. So since they're ratifications for you, we thought that it would be appropriate to put them on the consent calendar.
I had the same question, I really.
Do you know that, trustee Milchaker?
I didn't know it until I saw it on the, when I was reading the agenda. Now, I did ask for the minutes to be put on the consent calendar, because the minutes are something that we do every week, and it's not really something that, you know, if there's something in the minutes that someone wants to talk about, they pull it off the consent calendar, but almost never do we do that. But I was surprised to see the, these two items on the consent calendar, and I asked, what happens if, you know, we need to question Vice Chancellor Viscachill if something needs to be changed? And I was told, we could move it back off if you think it should be moved off. I've got mixed feelings about this item being on the consent calendar.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I guess, I don't understand the benefit, because if there's a question, then we're gonna have to pull it, and then it's gonna highlight it more, so.
Well, that's true for anything on the consent, you can pull anything on the consent calendar.
I know, but what, instead of keeping it as a regular item, and, you know, and not moving it to consent, I guess I, what does everyone else think?
We could move the academic, academic actions and the classified personnel actions off the consent calendar, and see how that works, or.
Well, you've had it that way.
We had it that way.
Did have it that way, yeah.
I think it's been that way since probably you've been on the board.
It's been that way for 38 years.
Typically, you don't have very many questions about those items, so.
And, and the other thing is, you really don't want to pull people's names off of these, because these are personnel items, so you don't want to mention their names in, in the open meeting, these televised meetings. But yet, if there are people who have questions about them, you certainly want to be able to ask, you know.
But you can do that with anything on the consent agenda.
Can.
Yeah.
I just, I guess, I'm indifferent, I don't care where it is, to be honest, no matter where an item is, you can pull it if you have a question.
Yeah.
But then, we still have a Human Resources section, and their 11.1 is.
Yes, because those are readouts, so those we have to do as separate items.
But the one thing that we're not reading out, we're not reading 11.1, which is the sabbatical leave rescindment.
Well, that's 11.2.
Oh.
But that's different.
Yeah, I have it on my notes, 11.1, so. I have it on the thing you wrote out, 11.1.
Yeah, but remember, when we talked earlier today, I told you they were switched.
They were switched, okay.
Because it's academic employees and classified personnel actions, something tells me, just having been here so long, that I would like to have that separated. I don't think it hurts that we see it as an individual item. So, yes, it's been that way, and I haven't had a problem, but I remember one time I did, and that was difficult, because it wasn't a consent item, but it was still difficult because it was an individual. So if that should ever happen again, I would rather just have it as a separate item. That's all. That's my take.
Okay, how do the other board members feel?
I agree with Terry.
Okay, so why don't we just put the, just the academic and the classified items off of the consent calendar, but leave the minutes and the other things that are just routine items, that aren't really important, that the, things on the consent item calendar are supposed to be routine items, that, that we just do every month, and that really don't have any, you know.
What about the NBUs?
What?
They are important.
No, they're very important, and the board members all have to read them, and we all do read them, of course. Yeah, yeah, you're right, I meant, I meant that they're just more routine and items that, and if someone had questions about them, because we all read them, if you have questions about them, then, then you would pull them off and say, I mean, just like I pulled the parking fees off to mention, that's great that we're not gonna be charging parking fees, didn't have to do it, but I thought I should highlight that.
I think, again, I don't personally care, but I think it, it seems to be the favor of the board to move them back to the Human Resources section.
And the NBUs as well?
What, NBUs?
Non-bargaining unit.
Personnel.
That's pretty, that's pretty routine, but I don't have a strong feeling about that one, I read it every month, and.
I think if the, I think what, I mean, look, I kind of agree with TJ, I don't, I don't really, I just kind of noticed it today, that, but I think that the feeling of the board.
I did point it out in the summary.
Yeah, I think the, I think what TJ's saying, and I agree, that the sense of the board is just to go back to the way these items were presented on the agenda for the last millennia.
For the last 38 years.
I agree.
But I understand, you know, I understand, you know, wanting to keep the meeting more succinct and more, moving more rapidly, you know, more. Anyway, so, so can you please call the roll for that item?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Okay, and then the next item is 9.16, and the classified personal action item, so I guess there's probably no changes, if Vice Chancellor Viscachill said there weren't any. But I did have to mention, there was, there's a classified employee, Corinne Wayman, administrative assistant to Saddleback, she's a senior administrative assistant who's been working here over 18 years, so I thought I'd bring that up, and, but we do love the employees that are staying, that are not retiring. So is there a motion and a second for this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, trustee Jay makes the motion, trustee Wright seconds it, and Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Okay, that's great, so that's, that's the consent calendar. And now we have. This is a little, right now we have, oh, the subword, agreement with Concordia University, which is really, really, Irvine Valley College is getting $1,305,000, so is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Jay, okay, trustee makes the motion, and trustee Wright seconds it? This is a good thing, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And this is, the next one is 10.2, we're hiring a new auditor for the next five years. Is there a motion and a second? And trustee Inman makes the motion, and trustee Jay, did you second it?
No.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, trustee Jay seconds it, and really did a search and found a good auditor that's gonna work for us for the next five years, so is, is there any questions or comments? Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
It's a California law that we have to change auditors every five years, which is a good idea, okay, 10.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's statutory. It's a recommendation.
Yeah, I.
It's a recommendation.
No, I talked to the chancellor today, and she said it is, it is a statutory.
Have to compete every five years. You could go through a competition and select the same auditor, but you do have to go through and compete.
Okay, okay.
You're mostly right.
Mostly right. But anyway, we are, it's a good idea, because the auditors get really friendly with, with the staff, and it's a good idea, anyway. The next, the next item is 10.3, we're adopting a resolution authorizing brand and light as the district's standard lighting control system. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion?
Second.
Trustee Wright seconds it, and it's much more effective to have a single source for lighting, so this will save our district money, hopefully. Trust, is there any questions? Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is 10.4, purchasing an emergency generator for Irvine Valley College, it's a natural gas generator. Is there, to keep things going, if there's a power outage, is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Wright seconds it?
I have a question.
TJ?
If someone can speak to, if this is, I know we have done some work on getting battery backups for the solar as a way of mitigating power outages, and also leveling our budget month to month. Is this something that could have been done with more batteries, or, I'm just curious why this is the method we go for backup power when we have the solar generation and the abilities with batteries? Considering the price of fuel.
Yeah.
So we currently don't have battery backups for all of the campus. Irvine Valley College is going to have some battery backup, but it won't cover the entire campus for utility, for electricity generation, and so we do need some backup generators for those buildings that aren't being fed by the battery backups of the solar electricity.
Is this connected directly to natural gas lines, or is it a propane tank, like one of those big ones?
I believe it's connected directly to natural gas, and if I'm wrong, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have emergency generators at Saddleback as well, such as this?
Okay, I am wrong, it's not.
Okay.
Is the giant tanks? I mean, if it's not connected to the ground, it's gotta be the giant tanks.
Grace, can you let Executive Director Ephraim in, and he can speak to it more fully?
Great.
Can you guys hear me fine?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so the generator is a diesel generator, and I don't remember the size of the tank itself, trustee Prendergast, but it's, we want to be independent of the gas lines as well, so this is, it's just, the generator sits up top, the tank sits at the bottom of the generator.
So it's not natural gas?
No.
Okay, where did we get natural gas from?
It says right here, installation of a new natural gas generator is required to keep building PE 200 operational.
Yeah, that might be a mistake, so.
Well, that's.
Pretty important we know which one we're voting on, to be honest.
Right now?
Yeah, it's 10.4, unless.
No, I know the item we're voting on, I mean, it's important to know what we're voting on.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I'm checking right now.
All right, can we table this and come back to it, when he gets, when he has an answer for us?
Yeah, okay, we'll come back.[1562.28]
Next meeting?
No, not the next meeting.
Not the next meeting.
He's working with him now.
Move to 11.1.
Yeah, so we're moving to 11.1, and this is academic employees and academic administrative personnel actions ratification. And we need to have Vice Chancellor Viscachill read some information items. But is there a motion and a second for this?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion?
Second.
And trustee Inman seconds it?
President Melchiker, I need to have a readout on this before you vote.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So there are two administrator contracts before the board this evening. The first one is for Dr. Kim DiArcy. The position is Acting Dean, Online Education and Learning Resources at Saddleback College. The contract dates February 28, 2022, through June 30, 2023. Range 22, Step 3, Annual Salary $180,312. The second contract is for the Interim Vice President for Instruction at Irvine Valley College. The employee name is Dr. Irene Malmgram. She is a retired distinguished administrator in the system. Her contract dates are March 7, 2022, through June 30, 2022. Range 25, Step 8, annual salary, which is prorated by 60% because she will not be working full-time, is $161,481. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're okay to vote on it now, right?
You are okay to vote on it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, okay. Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
And our next item is a sabbatical leave rescindment. And is there a motion and a second on this? I'm not sure why this is on here, but.
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion? Okay, trustee Wright makes a second. And are there any questions or comments? Okay. Madam Secretary, can you read the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
And the next item is.
12.1?
Yeah, 12.1, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College educational programs. Is there a motion and a second for this?
You do it.
Anybody?
So.
Okay, trustee Wright makes the motion?
I second it.
Trustee Jay seconds it. Are there any questions or comments? These are, some are community education programs, they look good. Madam Secretary, can you please read the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, and the next ones are information items. So is, are they ready with that information on item 10.4?
Yes.
Mitt Hahn?
Yes.
Okay, great.
We have the information. So it is natural gas, and it is hooked up directly to the natural gas lines. So I was correct to begin with.
Okay.
Thank you.
You were right all along. How do you like that?
I just, I don't know, it's a paranoia, but having giant propane tanks as targets are not usually a good idea. But, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's probably better. Less explosive.
The contract doesn't say, actually. It was a good question, but it's, I thought it was likely natural, it was gas.
Okay, so now is everybody okay to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll on that vote?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And the rest are just informational items. I'll just, I'll just read them. The first is the staff response to public comments from the previous board meeting. And the second one is Saddleback College speakers, all the speakers were already spoke.[1434.94]